Buddy, welcome to the Planning and Infrastructure Committee. The 7th of September. First of all, apologies. I've had apologies from Councillor Austin.
No, this is.
For Piper and Young. Any more apologies for the show? Any declarations of interest?
None at all.
No. The minutes of the last meeting. Is there a proposal?
I'll propose it, Chair.
Okay.
There's some football on tonight. I don't know if I can do it for the last minute, so I can't.
Oh, there's no football tonight, okay. Yes, Liverpool are planning some fun. Neighborhood plan.
Thank you, Chief Chant. You have a report from the Town Clerk, Laura. The budget for neighborhood plan is £20,000. It's allocated to progressive neighborhood plan and there is currently no committed expenditure. And this committee has the authority to spend the money within the terms of the financial regulations. There are a number of administrative tasks that are not progressing that the Town Clerk and RFO and colleagues have struggled to fit in around their commitments. So basically staff haven't got time, haven't got the capacity to do the work. The committee is asked to consider if part of the budget can be used to provide temporary part-time administrative support for the neighborhood plan. And the following is offered for conservation to be appointed as soon as possible until 31st of March. That should say 2023, next year. Attendance twice a month on a Friday morning of neighborhood plan meetings is expected. Other responsibilities can be arranged to take place at the postholder's convenience. And it's expected that this will be around five hours per week. The remuneration fee is £300 payable by backs upon receipt of invoice. So the idea is not for them to become a member of staff, but to be a contractor. To decide.
No. Well, the. The, oh, sorry. I was just going to count out reading, but no.
Just speaking personally, I would support. If I was somebody under church rather than an employee. I don't think we, this is the right to take another employee.
No.
Broader consideration.
Yeah, that's, that's the idea of the Town Clerk, to be a contractor as opposed to. As one of the few remaining people that goes to the neighborhood plan meeting, I would say that this would probably help to get everything sorted. Because it's very loose.
Question, Chair. Can I just ask, the £300 per month, is that the vortex?
Taxes will be their responsibility.
Yes.
Okay, so they'll be getting that if they're self-employed effectively.
Basically, yes.
Yes, councillor.
Does that represent the living wage?
Yes. It's supposed to be nine, ten something.
Ten sixty-three, I believe, and this is for five hours a week.
Yes. Councillor Nixon.
So, sure. So this is somebody that's coming in on work that's been done to continue an administrative role. Meanwhile, the people that have worked on it before, especially Jenny Dawes.
Oh, they'll be working with Jenny.
Okay, I just feel that for the people that have worked, not just Jenny, but I know her by name. But I mean, I'm thinking about the people that have put the hours in. There's an element of, I see a slight unfairness about it. I mean, God knows, I want this to progress and I want the people to have a living wage and I want all of that. I just think it's, I don't know, how can we do this tax-free? Just me? You with me while I'm doing this?
I don't think it, I mean, I don't know.
It to look like, oh, Christ, thanks for everything you've done for absolutely nothing, for absolutely years. But you know what, you're not fast enough.
No, Jenny knows and has agreed to this.
That's fine, that's.
It was agreed at our last, our meeting last.
That's brilliant, and that's lovely.
Yes, councillor.
Can I just clarify whether we have someone in line for this as a contractor? Because obviously if they're members staff, then it has to be advertised and there are different rules. But as a contractor, and how quickly would they start on that basis? As soon as possible. I don't believe there's anybody lined up for this at all. I think it will be advertised.
Absolutely.
Oh, it will be advertised.
We, we are sort of waiting on this consultant man called Dave Chetwin to visit from Liverpool. But he was supposed to come in next week and then he now can't because of, there's more rail strikes next week, I think. Well, that's my latest news on that. And it seems to be held up because of this. Yes, councillor Green.
I just wanted to ask, how long was it envisaged at this contract?
It's until 31st of March next year.
Until the end of that contract.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, yes, councillor.
There's something you just brought up about the guy coming from Liverpool. Come on Zoom or anything.
Yeah, I think.
Sorry, it was just, I'm constantly being written to by, well, constantly. I am written to by people saying, why don't we do more hybrid work? The councillor.
I heard, but you mean.
Yes, you want me to zoom in, that's a good idea.
I shall ask Jenny Dawes. Because it has been suggested and I'm not sure why, that's not the way. Oh, I know, because he wants to see for himself the listed buildings and the.
Right, well, that makes sense. Sorry, I used the wrong term there when I said hybrid. I meant, you know, us using Zoom and, you know, other things, Teams and that.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I understood. No, he wants to see for himself some stuff. But we've got to move it on.
Chair.
Yes.
I'll propose the recommendations that we accept, Chair.
Yes, yes, all those in favour?
Yep, thank you.
Anybody against?
Safe abstaining?
No.
So this Chair will be progressed by the Town Clerk and yourself. It's in the conservation area. Councillor Crittenden, thank you.
Proposed front door, sorry, proposed, yeah. Let's have a look. It's the new, it's the new development in church. Yeah. Well, they've all got the same front door.
They're running with that three or four year. Okay. Church. Does it matter?
So, yeah.
Yes.
It's in the conservation.
So the door on the side of the building is the main entrance at the moment. They're going to put a side window in and where he's at the front with the windows, they're going to put a front door in.
So councillor Crittendon, do you want to?
Can we have a look at the front elevator, sorry?
Pictures.
Have a look at the front elevation and the, the massive orange showing what it's.
So, yeah, so these are obviously the plans. So they're removing the ceiling and then converting, moving the kitchen from the back to the front and having the front there. So that's it, that's existing.
I can't see the door in that.
No, it's slow. There we go.
They're, they're treading into like barn door type.
And there is nothing else in the road that has got three doors next to each other that front onto the road. And I, and two of those doors are dummies that don't even open to the inside. Only the one on the left does. And it's. Thank you. I will quote my, I will quote my esteemed colleague here, bonkers. It's, I don't understand it. There, those new developments, as you say, they actually come along and then there's like setback and then they come back out, which is what you see here with the, they're moving the front door from within the setback area. I just don't get why they can't have a door and a window and they have to have three doors, two of which are dummies, because the windows, it's nothing. They can break enough. Actually, that is original. Sorry, thank you.
Sorry, carry on.
Yeah, that's the original. That's got a big window and then they want three doors there instead.
It is an anomaly with the other developments, yes.
Totally. I mean, I don't, I know the street, but I don't know this bit of the, I can't picture this bit of the street. But how much pavement is there?
Enough pavement.
No, because we're opening on to the pavement, aren't we?
Yes, enough.
Is that okay to open a door on to the pavement?
Not normally.
Well, it opens, I don't know if it opens.
It opens inwards.
Probably opens inwards, yeah, like a front.
Being inwards, yeah.
Is this going to be a shop?
That's how much pavement.
No, it's going to be a kitchen. Yeah, if you look down that way.
Yeah, there's enough pavement.
You can see, these are normal terrace properties with one door at the front. And if you go the other way, they are, they are the same. You've got a little bit more of this new development of that style. And then it goes back to the tall three-storey terraced houses with a door and a window. And I just, I just think it's not in keeping with the. Sorry. Door open, sorry.
I just think that what they've done is, or what they want to do is to use the width of the opening that they've already got there with the window to save them. If they put a front door there, then they're going to have to brick up. So it's to save them doing that.
They could put a window in there.
Uh, well, yeah, but obviously they don't. And I, I just looking at that, it's a modern type building in a conservation area. And I really, I can't see a particular issue with it.
The ones further up that we can't see have got front doors at the front, like that. But they have a little area in front of them with the fence, railings. Oh, sorry.
I, yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the plans inside, they're certainly spending a lot of money. It's happened with the kitchen areas that we saw. And I mean, it looks like quite, they're trying to find an industrial kind of vibe look. But I think it's quite attractive, actually. I think it's quite.
With the three doors, yeah. Councillor Nixon.
I don't really see a problem with it, I'll be honest with you.
On the side, is that door going?
Yeah, so just showing the.
That's the plan.
You're going to.
They're losing internal space, which is curious.
It's slow tonight. No, nothing got particularly nice.
Give me nine, I think.
So that's the side of the front door.
Yeah.
Blank.
This side, we'll block it off, but keep it as a door star.
There's a door, yeah.
And glass, still on the side.
Still there, that door.
Yeah.
Yeah, same. It's not a working door.
Oh, right.
Where the door is at, I mean.
Sweet, that.
So just leave it as a dummy door.
Yes.
Yeah, just a dummy door, yeah, like the front.
Well, that, then the dummy door will look like the real doors everyone else has got. Because every, because these, you've got a window there and then they, they go in. And then you've got doors there and then they come across.
I think the only, I'm sorry, Chair. I, I just think the only reason, the only effort of reason we've got is, is on the effects on the conservation area. And personally, I can't see that there is a damage to the conservation area with it. That's just my view.
Councillor Nixon.
Anyone have received any objections? We haven't as the Walk Councils, but has anyone sent any objections?
I'd look to see about any.
RTC or TDC or?
I just don't get it because having, having a series of bifold doors put in my house, they're, they're expensive. And they were internal doors, so external doors are going to be even more.
They're not doors, I think.
They're still dummies. But even, even you haven't got the, haven't got the thermal, the thermal protection, the thermal qualities that you would in a brick wall that would have insulation behind it. So does this meet building controls? I don't, I don't know. I don't get it. I don't know why you'd have dummy doors and why you'd keep the other door. I just don't get it at all.
Want to make it a garage and yes.
I mean, I, I mean, I agree with that. Does it meet building regs and all the rest of it? But the whole I don't get it thing doesn't really cut, cut an argument for whether you want it or not. Like whether we propose something against it or not. I'm for building regs and all the other things, absolutely, then of course. But do we have a proposal? Because I'm.
So you're proposing that we.
I know, Chair.
Okay, is there a second offer there? Yeah, councillor. All those in favour? I would say me. Those against? Three against. Any abstentions? And one abstention. Is that enough?
Yes.
First past the post.
And this one?
Yeah, the next one.
The next.
Much more interesting. Application is 41 to 45 High Street and 5 Hardes Street. Change of use of part first floor to three one-bed flats together with direction of extension over rear of 45 High Street to create 11 one-bed flats and three three-bed flats. This is in the conservation area, called in by councillors Albin and Crittendon. Impact of housing development on town centre, possible overdevelopment and effect on the conservation area. Thank you.
All right.
This one, the work's already been done.
Okay. Speaking of the bad visual shape. So this is.
Sandcastle.
The people talking with the car park at the back. So that's the area we.
So what's 45? I meant to look when I was coming down, but I've found. We got, 45 is Peacock's. But Peacock's has got more than one frontage. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's 41 to 45.
Right, okay.
So.
So that remains as retail.
Yes, yeah. So you've got existing rear from Broad Street. Argie Street, that's hard. And then you've got the front from the High Street. This High Street will move up to the top. So from the rear from Broad Street, they're planning a four-storey. Then on the street, you can see that's where the car park was. And then you've got the High Street where it's beautiful from.
It's not really the same street, is it?
I wish they also.
This is existing, so you've got the car park and you've got the festival where you put the frontage. 45 where there's the stores and then they're going to convert that into the one-bed flats. And then every floor up is one-bed flats after that.
Which are very, very convoluted, these flats.
So, Chair.
Yes, councillor Green.
So there'll be a lot of car parking in the church.
Yes.
There's no car parking.
Free commercial for what was normally there. And I believe there was two, two others that we looked at.
But the planners or the pre-planning thing said it is very close to Staffordshire Street car park. So we're not supposed to be concerned with loss of car parks. But it is close to what they are. Yes, you might be. But what they are about is, is deliveries to the shops.
The right-hand corner.
Yes, councillor.
Chair, I just think, you know. We obviously are in need of. I say one reason, Chair. I just think we are in need of one-bedroom flats, you know, we do need those type of things. But this, to me, just seems completely out of character in the, in the location where it's set. And also it appears overdevelopment.
Yes.
To me, so I couldn't support this application.
There are flats across the road. Well, there's that funny Victoria Restaurant, which is. A bit further down flats. And the big furniture store a bit further down has got planning permission for a huge number flats. And councillor Nixon.
Sorry, councillor. I was going to say, I think the reason I called it in, I haven't analysed the size of the rooms or anything else. I know councillor Wing is very good at that and I figured that if anyone did, councillor Wing would have done that for me. The reason that I called it in was because I felt that it would be something that would be useful for this council to actually express a view on, given its location. The number forty-seven, which is in the earlier picture to the, to the left of this development, is Discovery Planet for context for those that know that area. The area at the back that is being built on is a lot of, I think is a private car park rather than a public car park. It's so it's for local businesses or whatever to use. It's actually frankly a bit of rough ground with a very manky bit of metal fencing around it. And the, the building on that site, actually, I think is something that we could welcome. Because it will convert that from something quite unsightly into something much better. I am always concerned about density of population and parking. However, at Broad Street, it is, it is close to Staffordshire Street. Although of course that is a pay and display car park. There are an awful lot of flats in there. And along with councillor Albin, I do think that there is a, an element of possible overdevelopment there. But apart from that, I just, it's because of its location and the number of flats, even though there are positives, I just thought it would be useful for us to discuss, so.
And your next councillor, Heather.
I agree in terms of if there's a derelict space and they, we need flats, the rest of it, then putting something on there. I don't like the fact that it's using up car parking space. I think councillor Green agreed with on that one. But I do think it's too tall. It's a bit of a monolith, isn't it, in there? And I would like it to be a storey less and several flats less.
Sorry, I read the, they got lots of comments from the planners in a pre-application who said it was too tall. And I think the drawings are really, really difficult to read. I wish I'd coloured them in. But the bit along Hardes Street is now the same height. That middle elevation is the same height as the two next door.
Oh, okay.
And it's the one behind that is higher.
Oh, right. Thanks for pointing that out.
Yeah, it, no, I think the drawings are really, really difficult.
Because I wouldn't have beaten that if you hadn't said.
And I wish they could have coloured them in at least so we can see what's going on. Because right up in the top corner, there are little thumb, what's the word I'm looking for? Thumbprints, it's not. Little diagram showing what the finish will be.
Right.
Which involves yellow London stock bricks, which if they get nice ones, will be good. Lot of vertical black cladding. And there's some horizontal black cladding. And the little square in the bottom right-hand corner shows a sort of hairy green wall.
Hairy.
Hairy, it's all. Oh, coming out. I've never seen that. I know they are talking about a sedan roof, which I fully approve of. As long as it's maintained, they get really manky if they're not maintained. Anyway, sorry, councillor.
Same reasons as Steve and, well, and this, it's difficult. I mean, I'm for additional flats in the area. God knows we have a housing shortage and particularly this type of competition. But it's difficult to work out the sizes of these buildings. But looking at the way they've, these flats, the way they've positioned the furniture, they look quite small. You know, when you're looking at what's a double bed on the roof, which is the way I can gauge this, but, and too small. That's.
I think they, they haven't put the room sizes on, unlike that other application on the High Street. And I, I think there is one problem one where the, the double bed is pushed into the corner.
Because the double bed looks, it doesn't look as though there's much space around the front.
Well, there is, there is definitely one flat where there isn't. I wish they'd have to put them in such, they were in the area on. Yes, sorry, councillor.
Um, I think we have to ask ourselves, we're talking about our conservation, the Roundgate Conservation Area. Does that development enhance the conservation area? Because that is what it's supposed to do. Any new development should enhance the conservation area. Looking at that, that looks more like office blocks to me. In that, in regard to the design, and I don't think it enhances the conservation area. I also think it's overdevelopment and again, Ossil Shata.
Okay, who?
Councillor Wing.
Councillor Wing.
Oh, oh, I think. Davis first.
Councillor. Well, we usually ask about bin storage.
No, there's plenty of bin storage.
Um, sorry. We usually ask about bin storage and cycle space.
There, there is cycle space.
Yes, there's bin storage here. And there's, it doesn't say any application, but looking at the plan, there's about twenty-five cycles.
Is that one for each flat?
And it's eight or something.
Seventeen.
And there's twenty-five spaces counted on the flat. So it's more than.
More than enough bin storage.
And, but, yeah. Councillor Wing.
Dean, will you go back to the, the, the cross-section views, the cyber-street? No, it's not. But one more. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Get to cyber-central, they'll sort it out. So that, that, that one, the bottom right-hand side, what is the pencilled building at the back? The outline, is that this development?
This one, yeah.
No, the one on the right-hand side, did I say that?
Middle row, right.
Yeah. That, that one there, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the.
The larger build.
Yeah, it's the.
Four-story.
Yeah, the four-story showing. And then you've got the, the line one where that's, like you say, it's level with.
Yeah, so, so that's the, the dark, the darkness, the dark, thicker drawing is the existing buildings and the big one behind, that looks like a gasometer, is the building.
Is, I feel I have that to us.
Looks like a church.
The block of flats.
That's, that's the new building.
That's not the block of flats that already exists behind there.
That's, that's, that's what you're looking at, seeing that.
Yeah.
And then obviously you've got that, the hand bit and the block of flats, which is what they're going to.
You haven't got a photograph of Hardes Street. Frontage are way too big. Because there is a block of flats behind there and I can't, Clever Street or something it's called, I can't. Which then fronts on to Stafford Street car park.
Right.
Which is too big in that area.
There is, there is a block.
I can't, yeah, I can't remember what the block is called.
No, they, they have problems with the rubbish and that. I'm, I think the drawings are artificial. And they're very hard to see what it's like. But I would be in favour of it using these brownfield sites to, yeah.
Um, Chair, I'd like to make a proposal, if I may. That we object against this application on the grounds that the development is an overdevelopment of the site. The design is unacceptable within the Roundgate Conservation Area. Yeah.
Second.
Second. All those in favour of Steve's motion?
Thanks, Chair.
I'm the only one against.
But you've seen the plans in better detail.
Well, I've only seen notes, but I did spend a couple of hours looking at them. Um, yeah, we'll move on to the.
So your final application for this evening is.
I'm on it, then.
Good. For Saxon Road.
When councillor, it does pick up on the mics.
Yeah.
So in through next meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Curious backland development.
Will be picked up.
Yeah. It does, it does. Okay, I called this one in. And before you do that, can I just say, councillors, you do have mics, councillors? You do have mics here and when there's another conversation going on, it does pick up on the live stream and it can clash with the actual meeting. Sorry. Okay, this is for Saxon Road. Erection of a garage conversion to facilitate habitable room. Called in by councillor Makinson, you've said curious backlands development?
Yes, now I'm not entirely certain what I was thinking when I called.
You're on your own, darling.
Be too honest.
Um.
It's just the front of the road.
Yeah.
Garage, just behind Four Saxon Road.
It doesn't seem like there's room to get to the garage, but if it's there.
You've got the existing garage here with one of you. You've got the existing garage here with one of you, which is up on there, there, uh, and that. And then the garage conversion has had multiple openings and basically just a little design.
I'm gonna throw it in a minute.
So that's what we're seeing and that's the proposal.
Sorry, everyone, yes.
Chair, I, I, when I looked at this, I, I just had a tickle, uh, I had a little tickle to myself and a little laugh, because it said erection of a garage conversion. You can't erect a conversion, it's either an existing garage, which is to be converted to facilitate a habitable room.
I think that's what. Shall we check the application? Dean, Dean, is that exactly what it says on the applications? Yeah, that's the wording that we've received.
So that, so that, how the planners haven't picked it up is, I mean, not yet. But, um, my understanding is, um, from my knowledge of, of planning, is that in a single dwelling, uh, you can use, you can convert your garage to a habitable room without requiring any planning consent. Um, provided it's used ancillary to the, to the house. So why this application is before us, I, uh, do not know, however.
Leave it to Chair. Sorry. I, I thought you wanted to say something. Um, yeah, they're also put in four-fold doors, reminding us that to the other applicant. Which is curious that they might want to go back to being.
Um, we've looked at the application, um, and they are not saying what it's going to be used for, anything, ju-, this is literally all we've got.
It says habitable.
That's, but it doesn't give you any other.
Chair, I'm sorry, but it is, it says, uh, conversion to facilitate a habitable room. So in that, it would have to be in line with, uh.
Well, that's a bit of a.
And then building roofs will only do the construction, will only do any alterations, so they don't, they're, they're not interested in the.
No, no, for planning, that's not the internal layout and the installation is not a planning matter.
No.
No.
No, it's only the use that you're talking about, um, and I'm surprised it's forward here, I, I don't need it unless, unless the garage is separate from the house and doesn't belong to the house. So that may well be the case, but if it's on the, within the curtilage of the house, I don't understand that, so.
I think I pulled it in because I thought it was a new building. I was confused by what an ethic was. Has, oh, councillor Critten.
No, I was only going to say, uh, we don't know what they're going to use it for, but typically I've seen habitable rooms in back gardens used either for, um, young people to have their own separate, as teenagers are getting noisy or Airbnb. But, but it would be a perfectly acceptable version of Airbnb, because it wouldn't be losing accommodation on the open market. Um, those are the kind of things that I would have thought, and I don't see why.
They wouldn't need consent.
No, they wouldn't, for, you know, either for a teenage room or a.
No, 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 you said Airbnb.
Or, you know, it's within their, it's, it's within their own property that they're like letting a spare room.
But they would need drainage, water, all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, but that's not planning.
Well, they, they always, they consult with the southern water and all these planning applications.
Yeah, but it's not, that's not a planning issue regarding use.
Yes, next, right, councillor.
Propose comments.
Yeah, that's just what I was gonna say.
Councillor.
I was just gonna say that, uh, with energy, if somebody's working at home now.
Yeah.
And we're, we're reaching energy bills, I've done a similar thing. My, my building at the back is totally separate from the main house and I've super cladded it, because that's where I work in the winter, so I can switch the heating off in the main house. So I think there'll be a lot of people trying to save, save energy by converting smaller areas outside the building.
I would second the no comment. And we have these, just need a show of hands for that proposal, no comment. Okay. Albin.
Well, thank you.
Um, next meeting is October two thousand and twenty-two.